They want down.
Pacilla?
Here.
Worbal?
Here.
Bezner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Clokitis?
Here.
Boak?
Here.
Bangard?
Here.
Mun?
Here.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Alderman Gem.
Good evening. For as I would now in the season of giving thanks, guide us to be kind, thoughtful, and generous to those that are in need. We ask for your presence among us this evening as we discuss matters so that they are productive and respectful. Grant safety and courage to our police, fire, EMTs, and all city employees as they serve and protect all residents and visitors to the city of St. Charles. Grant wisdom and discernment to our mayor, elected and appointed officials, city staff, and all city's employees as we go about the daily responsibilities of serving the citizens and visitors to the city of St. Charles. Amen.
Alderman Weber, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I would be honored. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to free color for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations this evening, so the omnibus vote, Alderman Bezner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote.
Second.
Moved by Bezner, seconded by Worbal. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any old business this evening, so under new business, item A, a recommendation from me to approve the appointment of Patrick O'Connor to the Equity Inclusion Commission. Patrick is filling the vacancy on the Equity Inclusion Commission. He is currently a detective with the Naperville Police Department, working closely with LGBTQ groups and citizens of the community. He holds a bachelor's degree in English from the University of North Carolina and a master's degree in clinical mental health counseling from Northern Illinois University. Has volunteered in many organizations, including AmeriCorps, and he is here this evening. Could you please raise your hand? Thank you very much.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Worbal, seconded by Weber. Any questions or comments? Nancy, please call the roll.
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you, Patrick. We're happy to have you. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Patrick.
Item B, a recommendation from me to approve the appointment of Jeremy Mavi to the firefighter's pension board. Due to chief, former chief, Sponson's recent retirement, Jeremy Mavi will serve on the firefighter's pension board with a term expiring on April 30th, 2027.
Move, move. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Mun. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, the following items. We will have a few public hearings, and we, after each public hearing, we will go for a vote on the item that that public hearing pertained to. City Administrator McGuire is here this evening to answer questions in the absence of Finance Director Hannah tonight. The public hearing concerns, this first public hearing, item C, is for the 2024 proposed tax levy. This public hearing concerns the city's proposed 2024 tax levy. A notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on November 22nd, 2024. At this time, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Moved by Bezner, seconded by Mun. Nancy, can you please call the roll on that?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. I therefore hereby convene the public hearing to consider the proposed 2024 property tax levy. Tonight, we will take public comment from all the interested persons concerning the approval of the proposed tax levy for the city of St. Charles. The 2024 tax levy preliminary estimate was approved by council on November 4th, 2024. As such, there have been no changes in the estimates since that time. At this time, would any Alder persons like to make a comment? Yes, Alderman, Worbal?
I just want to reiterate what I said last year. I think we should be doing, our responsible process would be to, an evaluation of the budget first, then consideration of a property tax levy increase. I just think that's doing our due diligence, so I won't be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Alderman, Clokitis?
Thank you. Yeah, I have trouble supporting this because I think there are other ways we could come up with the money, and I don't think we've done our due diligence yet, so I will not be supporting this tonight either.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, city clerk, have there been any comments filed with your office?
No.
No? At this time, is there any public comment regarding this tax levy? No? Okay, I need a motion now to close the public hearing, please.
So move, second.
Moved by Gem, seconded by Lencioni. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, item D pertains to the public hearing you all just heard. Item D is a motion to approve the ordinance levying taxes for the 2024 tax levy year for the city of St. Charles.
Move for approval. Second.
Moved by Bezner, seconded by Gem. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
No.
Worbal?
No.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
No.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, we're moving on to our next public hearing, is for 2024 special service areas 1A, SSA 1B, SSA 5, SSA 6, SSA 7, SSA 10, SSA 13, and SSA 57 for the 2024 levy. This public hearing concerns the city's proposed 2024 property tax levy for the city's special service areas. A notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on November 22nd, 2024. At this time, I do need a motion to enter public hearing.
So move.
Second. Moved by Worbal, seconded by Mun. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. I hereby convene the public hearing to consider the proposed 2024 special service area property tax levy. Tonight, we will take public comment from all interested persons concerning the approval of the proposed levies for SSA 1A, 1B, SSA 5, SSA 6, 7, SSA 10, SSA 13, SSA 57. Would any Alder persons like to make a comment at this time on the record? No? City clerk, have any comments been filed with your office?
No.
No, thank you. At this time, those wishing to make public comments specifically related to the public hearing regarding SSAs, please step up to the podium. Thank you. I do need a motion to close this public hearing.
So move.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Gem. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we will call the motion for item F, which is pertaining to the public hearing you just heard. Item F, motion to approve this special service area ordinance is levying taxes for SSA 1, SSA 1B, SSA 5, SSA 6, SSA 7, SSA 10, SSA 13, and SSA 57 for the 2024 levy year for the city of St. Charles.
Motion by Mun.
Moved by Mun, seconded by Gem. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Thank you. Under committee reports, government operations, Alderman Weber, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Government services, Alderman, Bangard, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Turning it over to you for planning and development, Alderman Lencioni.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept and place and file the minutes of the PND Committee meeting held on November 11th, 2024. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Bezner. Any comments regarding that item? Nancy, please call the roll.
Pacilla?
Yes.
Worbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Clokitis?
Yes.
Boak?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Mun?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gem?
We are moving on to public comment at this moment, item 10, so those wanting to make a public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Mike Tech and City Council. I'm Ted Delard, NEST co-chair. The Naperville, currently, City Council currently stands in opposition to the IMA's proposal for early contract renewal. Some of the reasons council members have given for their opposition are, early extension is a bad deal for Naperville because it denies ratepayers benefits of market-based competition. The IMA has not shown how they plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to zero, and they have not shown a plan to replace the coal power generation per CG guidelines. Naperville ratepayers are not fairly represented. We consume 35% of IMA's total electricity output, yet only have 3% of the vote. Finally, the IMA is not committed to integrated resource planning thereby excluding stakeholders from participating in public sector power planning and limiting the city council's ability to form necessary financial oversight. An IRP is a tool enabling such oversight. IMA has not shared operating costs, CapEx, transmission costs, locational reliability charges, and reliability pricing model auction accreditation credits at a level of granularity to support effective oversight. An IRP would deliver the transparency that is critically important to making good decisions about our next power supply provider. Having an IRP would lower our city's risk because it enables the creation and sharing of information crucial to effective financial oversight by our city council. Representative Janet Yang-Ror introduced legislation requiring municipal utilities and power agencies such as the IMA that serves them to perform integrated resource planning and to close transparency loopholes, to give ratepayers a voice and a choice, to enable city councils to effectively perform financial oversight, to put the public back in public power. This legislation is opposed by the IMA. Let me share with you the latest, our latest efforts to encourage the IMA to perform an IRP and to be more transparent. NEST is participating in a negotiation with Representative Janet Yang-Ror and Senator Laura Elman. The IMA, city of Naperville staff, city council members, the League of Women Voters, the Sierra Club, Citizens Utility Board, and Clean to find common ground over the proposed legislation. Here are some of the insights gained during our last session. We challenge the IMA to share how they include the public in their planning. IMA said that they meet monthly in open dialogue, but the information shared follows their internal planning, which excludes stakeholders and is generally a one-way dialogue. One of the IMA executives challenged the value of producing an IMA, stating the IMA only plans for three years. They only plan for three years. So why do they need members to commit to an extension 10 years before our current contract is set to expire? The IMA has claimed they are transparent. Over the next several weeks, we will give them the opportunity to show us. The next negotiating session will include the same parties and is planned to take place in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, I'm Hewlett Prucker. I live in St. Charles. Tonight, I'm going to tell you a story. I call it a tale of two towns. Starville and Aistown are two mid-sized midwestern towns. They have much in common. They both get their electricity from a consortium that is asking for their contracts to be renewed 10 years early for an additional 20 years. Both city councils are thrown for a loop and start asking questions. Both city councils get background from their representatives on the consortium board, then they get the sales pitch from the consortium, but the city councils still have many questions. So they both ask for more information from their board representatives, but their replies don't really answer the questions. The city council asks other questions, but they're not getting the information they need. A big question is, what sort of power supply mix will be necessary and available to provide adequate electricity for the town's needs? The mayors of both towns seem to be in favor of signing the contract renewal, and the board representatives definitely favor signing the contract renewal. The city councils are confused, frustrated, and don't know what to do. So in Starville, the city council members are angry and confused. They seem to be paralyzed by fear and frustration. They are afraid that the town will be left without adequate electricity if they don't sign a contract extension. They can't seem to find out whether there are alternative sources of power from another provider that will be adequate for the town's needs. Finally, they just give up, and they sign the contract extensions, so the lights will stay on and everyone can sleep at night. But the city council cannot tell the residents of Starville that this is the best contract for the town and its future energy needs. In Aistown, the city council members are also angry and confused. Finally, someone on the city council says, wait a minute, we can figure this out. So they pore over the existing contract and the new contract. When their local board representative isn't giving them the answers they want, the city council contacts the city councils of other towns that are struggling with the same problem. They locate a public service organization that deals with energy issues and pick their brain. Finally, they hire an energy consultant to learn what mix of power supply they will need and whether there are adequate alternative sources for this power supply. They talk to other electricity providers and get bids. After a lot of hard work, they reach a decision, and they can definitely tell the residents of Aistown that this is the best contract for the town and its future energy needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Gass, and I live in St. Charles. I didn't realize what a great lead-in to what I'm going to say, Hugh Lee's story is, but right along with her story, I want to invite all of you to a public forum on the future of energy. This is something that our group, the Tri-Cities Clean Energy Group, feels will help you understand the totality of this contract and also the alternatives. I sent this to each of you in your emails, the invitation, but we have some really great speakers lined up. One of them is a professional in energy policy who's going to explain in lay terms so that we can all understand the electric grid and how the various players interact. And there is also going to be a professional in climate solutions, working on accelerating clean renewable energy alternatives to conventional power plants, and representative from an independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that works on clean energy. And we're also working on a few more speakers to address different topics. And this forum will be similar to the one that was done in Winnetka, where there will be set time limits, and there will be plenty of time for questions and answers. I put on my email to you that I sincerely hope that each one of you will be at the public forum, and you can have your questions ready, and there should be time to ask all your questions and get the answers. So with that, I also wanted to tell you, the second thing that I sent all of you is a summary of the Winnetka Public Forum. I guess I kind of feel like I want to be a little bit more brief than reading the whole summary to you, but these company, these people that presented had a lot of very interesting things to say, and they come from the industry. So they're people who are in parallel places as IMA. So they're not people like me who are just learning and trying to educate you. These are people who are in the field, who are talking about what's out there and available. In the information that I sent you, there's hot links to their details, so you can look, okay? Who are these people? Where do they act to? Also, links to the companies that they work for. I wanted this entire statement to be put on the public record. I don't know if there's a way that one of you can ask for it to be put into the notes for today's meeting, so that the citizens who access the minutes from today's meeting will actually be able to read this and also hit those hot links to educate themselves. I'm asking you if there's something you can do. I don't know if there's somebody here who can answer that.
I have a question for the attorney. Is that something we can do, Nick? Submit that to the record?
Normally, when a speaker wants to do that, they should ask for permission to submit it to the clerk, and the clerk can put it into the record.
The clerk would put it in, okay.
I did submit these statements and asked them to be put into the public record earlier. I submitted them to Marzena Sheets, and she informed me that they would only be summarized.
I won't speak for Marzena, but that's in the minutes. It'll only be summarized, but if you want it as part of the record, please submit it to the clerk.
Okay. I did ask her to do that, to make it part of the public record, so how do I submit it?
Well, we're going to let you do it tonight because you're at the podium right now. So if you've got it, why don't you just bring it over here and give it to the clerk?
Is that you? Okay, all right.
That's her name, please.
Okay. I'm going to do that then, instead of reading everything on here, but I wanted to know that we put this together to demonstrate that information's readily available from many sources, and to obtain side-by-side comparison of options, you're going to need to hire a consultant, somebody who can help guide you. I think we saw in the minutes today that there was going to be a consultant hired for looking at sidewalk cracks, and so we feel like this is at least on par with the repair of sidewalks or an evaluation of sidewalk cracks. And also, the last person who spoke at the Winnetka Forum was J.C. Kibby, who works for the state of Illinois, and he discussed funds that are available for municipalities like St. Charles that would help us with the cost to investigate our energy options. And there's grants up to $200,000 available, he said. So we encourage the city to dig into that opportunity, and we also think that you should strongly consider going in on the grant application with these other two communities who we've been telling you are also interested in finding more information about, which is Naperville, that gentleman who spoke prior, and Winnetka. This gentleman spoke at the Winnetka Forum, and we think that the state would look favorably on communities getting together to try to get information and giving a grant to a group of communities instead of having to issue individual grants to each of those communities. And I'm sure there's not going to be grants for each community that asks for it. All right. So far, you've only heard from IMA, and we feel strongly like you need to hear from other competitors and industry experts. Things aren't the same as when that original contract was signed. Thank you for your time, and thanks for all your service on the city council.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Greg Taylor. I live in St. Charles also. I hope that the city council and the city staff view this power contract as more than an important utility contract. In my opinion and experience, it is a huge economic stimulus opportunity for the city. Every dollar that we save through a transparent and competitive bid process will stay here in our community, not shipped to Springfield and to IMA. The extra cash in citizens' and businesses' accounts will drive economic activity in our town. So how much of an economic stimulus are we talking about? Well, we know that the value of the proposed contract over 20 years is worth $800 million. When power was deregulated in Illinois several years ago, I worked at an X-ray tube manufacturing facility. I was the materials manager and purchasing manager. We used huge amounts of electricity at that plant. We used so much electricity that the grid provider would actually call our plant when they were having a problem with the demand surge. So we conducted a competitive bid back then, and in our competitive bid, we used ComEd, Exelon, and two third-party power providers. At that time, Exelon was ComEd's version of a third-party power provider. ComEd was the most expensive. Exelon was the second most expensive, and both third-party power providers offered significant savings. So when I read and hear about people justifying IMA rates when they compare it to ComEd, I just shake my head and just figure they have no purchasing experience or any experience dealing in this field. Third-party power providers have been providing Illinois communities, businesses, and homes electricity for over 20 years for one reason. They provide savings and value to their customers. If they didn't, they wouldn't be in business today. The X-ray tube plant that I worked on was also concerned about power shortages and services, just like the city of St. Charles is. And it was the ComEd rep that actually assured us that we really had no concern, that our risk of an outage or a brownout was no more or no less if we used a third-party power provider or if we stayed with ComEd. He explained to us that the power grid manager and the distribution system were all going to remain the same. Our risk would not change. The only thing that would change would be how much we paid for our power. We saved 10% to 15% on that contract. I also want to note that up until three years ago, Martha and I, we also owned a house in DeKalb. We would compare the DeKalb and St. Charles utility bills often. The cost of power in St. Charles was significantly more expensive than the cost of power in DeKalb. It made no sense to me. I wish I could remember the percentages, but I just can't. But what I do remember is thinking, how in the world can that happen? St. Charles owns their own utility, yet we're paying more for power in St. Charles. It just made no sense to me. So I do not think it's unreasonable or unexpected that if you actually did do a third-party power bid, that the savings generated by the city would be somewhere between 8% and 12%. That savings would calculate to $80 million of additional cash circulating in our local economy over the length of the contract. Who knows what the savings, who knows? The savings might even come from IMA. You know, when you put a company's business out for bid, they tend to sharpen their pencil. We have nothing to lose by performing a competitive bid on the power, and we could gain a huge economic stimulus for our economy if we do, our local economy. So please, do not let this opportunity pass and insist that a comprehensive competitive bid is performed so that you can make the best informed decision on this most important topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name's Rich Cochran. I live in St. Charles. Tonight, I would like to address Prairie State's recent statement during a tour of the facility by some members of the city council. These members were told that there is no coal ash pond at Prairie State and that Prairie State recycles 100% of all coal ash produced. According to the EPA, coal ash, also referred to as coal combustion residuals, or CCR, is produced from the burning of coal, primarily from the burning of coal in coal-fired power plants. Coal ash includes a number of byproducts produced from burning coal, including fly ash, bottom ash, boiler slag, and flue gas. Everything left over from the burning of coal is coal ash. I have provided you with this statement, a copy of the 20, it was emailed to you about 5:00 this afternoon. 2023 annual inspection report existing coal combustion residual landfill Prairie State Energy Campus near Field landfill, which is required to be completed by federal law according to this 2023 annual report. Each year, over 3 million cubic yards of CCRs are placed in the landfill. In December 2023, the landfill is reported to contain about 22 million cubic yards of coal ash waste. Here's a comparison. Here's a comparison to give you a better understanding of how much CCRs are in Prairie State's massive landfill. The current amount of CCRs in the landfill is equivalent to a pile of 20.8 million full-size mattresses. Each year, an additional 2.8 million full-size mattresses is added to the pile. Shown here is a photo of, um, the landfill overlay on Chicago. It's one mile square, 750 feet high. There is a coal ash landfill at Prairie State. In regard to Prairie State's statement that they recycle 100% of the coal ash, I will refer you to Prairie State's own 2023 review, year in review, report that states that Prairie State beneficially reused 87.8% of the fly ash and 67.9% of the gypsum created by our operations. But fly ash and gypsum account for only a part of the CCRs produced by Prairie State. Therefore, the recycling and reuse of fly ash and gypsum equals approximately 69% of all CCRs produced by Prairie State. This means that approximately 31% of the CCRs produced by Prairie State are going into the landfill each year. And since the amount going into landfill each year exceeds 3 million cubic yards, this is not an insignificant amount of waste. I appreciate your time in reviewing this information and hope that you will add this to the list of topics in your future discussions with IMEA. I cannot stress enough how important it is to get information from qualified experts and to not rely solely on IMEA provides. Thank you very much. I also wanted to mention, I like the mural on Smithy's.
Oh, thank you. Any other public comments this evening? No? Okay, I have a few things. Um, first, I just want to recognize our acting police chief, Ms. Juski, on the corner there. He had a busy day yesterday, and so did his team. I want to say thank you for your professionalism during all of that on behalf of city council and the way you and your staff acted during that incident. We appreciate you and all you do for the safety of our residents of St. Charles, so thank you for that. Um, just want to thank the St. Charles Business Alliance for a wonderful holiday homecoming weekend. They couldn't turn the temperature up. We were all freezing, but, um, the festivities were great. I know the parade was well-attended and so were the lighting of the lights. It's also, we, um, small business Saturday was last week, but that doesn't mean we should stop supporting local businesses all year round, so please do that, especially during the holiday season. And it's also the season of giving, and you'll see that we've featured a few organizations on some of our social media efforts and videos, so, um, I encourage you to give to organizations that help those in need in our community. St. Charles organizations, obviously, but all organizations that are not for profit in our region. I do want to then give a shout out to the St. Charles kids that are here, students, specifically Abe Lydig, AKA my daughter's boyfriend. So, uh, shout out to all the students that are here today. Thank you again for coming, and I'll see most of you on Friday for government for a day here. Um, does city council have any comments they would like to make? No? Does staff have anything additional? We do not have an executive session, but we do have two committee meetings following this, so, um, get ready. Uh, so I do need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Werbal, seconded by Patilla. Nance, can you please call the roll?
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Folk?
Yes.
Bangar?
Yes.
Munn? Lencioni? Gem?
Yes.